It's preparing. Now we're live.
Alrighty, thank you. Alright, everybody. Thank you for joining tonight. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is a regular session of the mayor and council of city of Bisbee, county of Cochise, state of Arizona. This is being held on Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, starting at 7:02 PM by Zoom. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Louis Pollak.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacamino.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis.
Yeah.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Yeah.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hanson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein. City staff, Stephen Pocken, city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Joelle Anders, personnel director, Jesus Haro, public works director, Alberti Chavet, police chief, George Castillo, fire chief, Joe Svestas, city attorney.
Alright, thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight, either on Zoom or Facebook. For tonight, I just want to give us a moment to think back. We had a close tragedy, but it was averted this weekend. I think we all should give a moment of thanks to our fire department and others, firefighters, the police department, and of course, public works that all worked together along with these fire, air crews that came in and diverted a very possible problem. So just that, and we just have to please take note of the the conditions we're in right now, the huge drought, and and that we all think about trying to be as safe as we can and give thanks for what did happen, and hopefully, we don't have that again. So just take a moment. Thanks. Alright, thank you. With that, I have a small announcement. We just had the passing of one of our former fire chiefs. He served the department for over 24 years. Norman, and this last spelling is very tough, but it's Wyms, I believe, and is how I would say it. He's he's having a graveside memorial for the family at Evergreen Cemetery this Saturday on the 22nd at 10:00 AM. So just in remembrance of one of our past employees that gave a lot of years to us and led the fire department into somewhat what we have today. So thank you for that and condolences to the family. So let's, moving on, call the public. I believe we have one letter I was informed of, and go ahead and let that be read. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is from Fred Miller. Hello, would you please read the following comments during call to the public agenda item? Good evening. I am speaking tonight about item 2B, a permit for a market operation in Vista Park on the consent agenda under general business. Since a market is a valuable resource for the city and residents, I hope there would be extra scrutiny of the operators and the operation for any proposed operational permit. To that end, I urge you to remove it from the consent agenda for more discussion. The permit application information is sketchy and unclear. Further, I ask you to either table this permit request and ask for more information from the applicant, or at the very least, give conditional approval for a three-month trial period with review at the end of that term. These are my concerns about this application. No one from Bisbee is associated with this request. Applicants are from Douglas, and the permit was prepared by a commercial firm in Grass Valley, California. This permit, if approved, would grant the use of Lower Vista Park for 52 Saturdays from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, effectively blocking the park for any other Saturday day use. The permit itself has four different company names. One is an LLC, another is a proposed nonprofit with a different name and a different DBA. It is unclear what the actual applicant will use and what company will be the responsible party. Casador Ranch, Michael Story, Reyna Lemons, Casador Ranch LLC, statutory agent Jess James Foster, Casador Farmers Market, Green Bisbee Farmers Market is the name to be reserved at the ACC as a nonprofit. Casador Ranch LLC, Jesse James Foster, will own the name reservation. This has not yet been approved by the ACC. There is no address on the permit application. The name on the insurance application is Casador Ranch LLC, doing business as Vista Park Farmers. The insurance application submitted by Evanston Insurance of Illinois with an agent in Grass Valley, California, showed that three other entities are insured by the company. Bisbee Parks and Recreation, 118 Arizona Street. This address not used by the city for at least two years. Silver Creek Church in Douglas, that appears to have no structure in their name, and Turquoise Valley Golf Course, which has ceased being a golf course three years ago. There is no operational plan submitted for the proposed market. There is no indication of who any vendors might be other than the applicant. As written, the permit would only allow fruits and vegetables to be sold, no prepared food, non-food items, or crafts. Casador Ranch, address noted on the reserve name application, is listed as 4161 East College Peak Road, Douglas. This address does not show up on a Google Maps search. It does show on a Zillow.com search and appears to be an abandoned building, perhaps a double wife with no occupancy, although photo is undated. Is this the residence of the permit requesters? Sincerely, Fred Miller.
Alright, thank you. So moving on to general business, I'll entertain a motion for accounts payable.
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $501,671.55.
I second.
Alright, we have a motion by Anna and a second by Joe for accounts payable. Entertain questions. Do we see anyone with a question? Okay, Joni, go ahead.
Do you have a couple? The first one is on page four. And it's operational expenses. It's just a few lines down under Public Works Administration for dry wipe roll for $108. What is that used for?
Those are cleaning wipes that the Public Works Administration pays for upfront. And then as the other departments within Public Works utilizes them, we backcharge those accounts so that they will pay for their portion that they use. So those are sanitary wipes.
Okay, and then the other one is on page five, same distance down landscaping material. Riserless body, what's that, for 391 and twice charge?
Which page? I'm sorry.
On page five.
Page five?
It's just a little bit down, like the second bold.
Oh, sure. Yes. Let me make sure if I'm looking at the right parts. Yes, those are sprinkler head replacements for Vista Park.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other hands wave at me? Okay, not seeing any. I will call for a vote. We have a motion second to approve the accounts payable as listed. Vote, please.
Councilmember Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, so moved. Alright, moving on to the consent agenda, I will already ask that we pull item C for further discussion. I'll entertain a motion for the other four items unless somebody would like anything else pooled. Anybody else have a reason? Seeing none, then I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, items A, B, D, and E as listed.
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Frank, a motion by myself to approve the consent agendas, items A, B, D, and E. Can I have a vote, please?
Councilmember Pollak. Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, 7-0, so moved. So what we'll do now is open the discussion for item C. I pulled this. We have one letter that was read. Of course, it was done at call because I didn't know it was going to be pooled. And I'll apologize, maybe I should have put it on the non-consent agenda, but I was pretty sure it'd probably be pooled. So I would be, I asked that the applicant be brought on tonight so we could ask questions.
I'm gonna unmute her right now.
If you could do that for us, Ashley, that would help. And then I will open it up for discussions and any questions that you may have. The applicant.
I just don't, you know.
Are you there?
Yeah.
Okay, there she is.
Alrighty. And could you identify yourself and spell your last name, please?
Oh, sure. It's Rhona, and then you might have Maneri, M-A-N-E-R-I.
Okay, thank you. We have your application here, and there's been quite a few questions brought up. And I'm just wondering, I'm gonna open this up for discussion. I would appreciate any council members to ask away what they may have. And I'll, of course, get to mine also. Anybody want to open it up for questions? Alright, seeing none, let me ask the first one. The concern I have is you have an application that runs from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, but you're advertising that you're over a one. Do you need four hours for the final cleanup, or was that something that you just maybe missed? Put in there, I'll do.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Well, when we thought about this, we thought about bringing some of the musicians, like having some jam sessions or music lessons after the market. But that's not really, I rethought that out and thought, maybe that would just be too much work myself because I'd have to stay there until... So we wanted to keep portions of the time for future concerts and events, if that works. But we asked for permission.
Yeah, what you're applying for doesn't really include a concert-type situation. So, you know, that might be more of a future problem. So I guess my second situation is that you've applied or there's an application here for insurance, but there's no insurance that's actually listed. Have you got your insurance yet or not?
Well, it's pending the approval, of course, for the name, so sorry if there's a misunderstanding. But there are two things I want to clear up. One is, we're trying to do a service. Last weekend, there was no one using the park. We're trying to put it on green grass instead of where it is. And to answer your question, yeah, I mean, the insurance is willing and ready to go. It wasn't a California company I chose. It's the only one that ensures Lloyds of London. So they're one of the top insurance companies, if you're familiar, for concerts and events. And the second is that they do farmers markets, which is very few. I called Farmers Insurance in Sierra Vista, and I think they have one locally somewhere in Bisbee. They don't offer it. So if that's a problem, I can shop for another insurance company, but it hasn't been paid for. Neither has the name Green Bisbee Farmers Market because it hasn't been approved. So it's sort of like a chicken and an egg right now. If you approve it, I can pay them.
Alrighty, so you would be the contact person then? Because I don't see your actual last name on this application.
Yeah, I would be the contact person. I think I filled it out. So Michael Story is one of the customers of the market who is now wanting to, you know, we're all up to more discussions about how we can help the market be successful. But yeah, my name should be on the application. I filled it out. I was there with Mr. Haro. We drove and actually, we didn't even know we had to do this meeting, so I apologize. But we just thought it was going to be automatically approved because Mr. Haro said we just fill out the permit.
Yeah, I'm sorry. But yeah, it has to come before council and then, you know, be discovered and so on.
And we're sensitive to that. Like whatever, you know, you guys would like to see happen, we're open to that. We just feel as vendors, the gravel, there's an open bar. There's a lot of great musicians there that I like. But most of the people that have put their lives, savings into this market like to be at the park. But for some reason, they're not at the park. So, you know.
So what you're going is your vendors would basically be the ones that were there before and moved away, and now you think they'll come back? Is that what you're saying?
Maybe, maybe, but we're open to advertising to new people. Like the American Heart Association might help give us a grant, and they would have a booth there. They would provide recipes for heart attack victims. So just, you know, maybe Sierra Vista, Tucson. There's other markets we can reach out to that might provide vendors.
I think part of the problem is your application just says selling plants and vegetables. It doesn't give a lot of information to us, and that's...
And yeah, that's because, that's because at La Ramada, the old market, they've had health inspectors shut down their food trucks recently in the restaurant. And in the future, if someone has a license and they're not, I don't know of any food vendors. I've talked to them all that sell food, cooked food, and none of them really have a license anymore, or they've moved out of the market. I don't know anyone that's selling, maybe one lady. But I would definitely let her do food, if, you know. So I can amend it to say food, prepared food, if that's needed. But I just don't want to have someone from the old market with a ticket or something, and then, oh, gosh, here he is in the park again.
Well, that's what makes your application incomplete, as I see it, is that you say we'll be serving food, and you say no. Then if you turn around and did prepare food, that would make the application incorrect. So I think there's a little misunderstanding maybe here going on and
Sure.
and that you have to accompany those permits along with your application as you start to take on these food people. So if you do, so that's part of the situation. So I'm gonna open up for more questions. I see Frank first, and then I'll go to Joni.
Yes, you know, we'd all like to see something happen at the Vista Park again. But I think you need to flesh out your application a little more. Just what your format's gonna be, who vendors might be, your times, who's gonna be there. It sounds like you're over at the La Ramada place now. Be great to have people back at the Vista, but we need to have this fleshed out a little more before we can approve this.
Sure. And, go ahead, go ahead. You know, I'll just be honest with you, too. I mean, I'm willing to put a little bit more time in this, but if there's somebody else and I didn't see another applicant, you know, I'm willing to forfeit or withdraw my application because I really can't bear the expense. I mean, this is just a market, the market beforehand has a lot of issues, and I really just can only give what I've given so far, to be honest. I mean, if, you know, if people want us to help get the, I think there's enough people to support both markets. But there is a dilemma here. The lady was doing it for a long time, and she sees it as I might be taking her income, and there's a monopoly somewhat, right? I mean, your own worker was saying this market shouldn't be a monopoly, so I'm not sure what else I can do. I'll just be frank with you, like.
Right. Joni, go ahead.
Well, one of the questions I had, it was the conflict, you know, with the other farmers market. I guess my question, why not on a Sunday? You know, so then we have a whole week of farmers market.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Sundays, really, I try to go to church, and I just, I don't want to work on a Sunday, to be honest with you. But in California, New York City, you could do a Sunday farmers market. I've experienced those living in New York and Brooklyn. But here, it would be very limited, if not challenging. Most farmers market, Saturday is the big day. And if there's a good market that's going on Saturday, which I haven't seen in Bisbee or Douglas, even Sierra Vista, it's probably not gonna work. The ones we did in Napa, California, it was Saturday, there was no Sunday. And then we added Tuesday, and there was a Thursday. And those markets had a lot of money. The vineyards supported it. There was grant money. I mean, if there's some money for me to do all of this, I've talked to all the vendors. I've done a lot of research, done a lot of work so far. So basically, I mean, if people want to chime in somehow, we can get a grant for this, that would be great. But Sundays would probably require, and I'm looking at just getting this market going properly, like $20,000, $30,000. Like the grass needs some reseeding, talking to these people, trying to work on an agreement with the locals. This is a very small town, and, you know, I'm not from here, as everyone said. I just see that Warren could have some fresh vegetables, and I'm willing to give it what I can to get people there. But I don't think I can really try much harder than what I've put into it. So if I think someone else, maybe Laura or some other person, should have probably come in and helped this place out already. I don't understand why it's not working. If anyone knows, why do you think this is no market here?
Well, yeah, the whole reseeding thing would be from our aspect, not yours. But I have more questions.
I did have one other question. I was just curious why it was so limited.
Budget, I have very limited resources. Besides trying to have one of my only farmers grow food from our ranch and market here, who's a Cal grad who, you know, did IT for the YMCA, he shouldn't be out here gardening. But because of COVID-19, the shortage of food and the limited resources the town has, we've generously said, okay, we'll use our land, our water, grow stuff, bring it to this market, and try and get some of the vendors, if they want to come. Most of the vendors, I think, want to come back to the market. But Laura and whoever else was running it seems to have, like, done it for so long. It's kind of like, how do we do a middle road with her, too, I guess? I don't know if you like her or not, but you're asking me, why would I take from the other market? Well, the other market probably isn't, I'll just tell you, children come, and they'll never, they don't come back because of the gravel and the drinking and the restaurant, and then the restaurant shut down from the inspector. So I like Laura. I like the other lady who owns the La Ramada. But I'm not really sure how to answer your questions about it. Because I'm conflicted myself. I'd like it if Laura could help out, too, and the other vendors. But does anyone have, I'm not sure what the position is on these people either. Can they come back? I mean, if I were running the market, can some of the vendors come back? Why not?
Well, you're your own business, and we would give you the use of the park. Since you're bringing up the old money situation, and I understand when this was first fleshed out so it could be a year-round event, we were talking about doing it in quarterly payments so that there isn't all this huge upfront. So I don't know if you would be interested in a trial quarterly first. Because, to be quite honest, I'm a little uncomfortable giving a full-year permit for something that we're not quite, you know, it's a fledgling thing. And I would love it if you guys could all work it out and bring it back. But that's not our, that's not where, you know, that's not our responsibility. That's to me, the private industry and business on their own. But I think I saw Jones' hand. Did you?
I was just curious as to what your vision was for this. It sounds like you're, one of two things, you're trying to get the market back into Sierra or into the Vista using vendors that were there before. But what is your vision for it? You know, having food, having entertainment, having vendors that sells, like baskets or metal or wood or whatever, like it was before. So what are you looking to do?
Well, basically, sell a lot of vegetables, really fresh vegetables. Like in New York City and Brooklyn, there wasn't a music scene, but I like the music scene. So I want to build on the music scene, make the music scene better. I'm a musician myself, so originally, what attracted me to doing the market, my partner's the gardener. I have like a black thumb, but I'm learning. It's just to be able to sing at these farmers markets and hang out and do music, like jazz music or classical music or something like that. So that's one vision I have, is to make the market like it is. I like the market now at La Ramada because they have fabulous, they've had some fabulous musicians and shows. And I like all the vendors, but what's very sparse there is fresh vegetables. And so I'd like to see it like the Brooklyn Farmers Market. And, I mean, they had upstate New York. I'd like to bring back Douglas, get more cattle, get like, get into the ranching lifestyle. We only have two cattle, one's we're working on now. But chickens, fresh food, and really get the market just, there's a lot of food here I can't get. And, you know, if I can grow the food, we have a lot of food. We're growing some lettuce, at least about 20 of them, and they're coming out good. So I'd like to give those away, you know, at the end of the day, not let them rot here. And just improve upon, you know, like, literally, how I see it is a really nice market where you have white umbrellas, you know, and it looks beautiful, and you have the musicians, and clean it up a bit, make it a little bit more, I don't want to say corporate, but it would be great to get some sponsorships that might donate, like Tractor Supply I looked into. They will donate umbrellas for the market. And maybe another group at the social club, they sing there, the Twilight Band. They offered to give us a free piano. So, I mean, I'm from Berkeley. I've spent some time in my life Berkeley, too, in California. And so a lot of these parks and, you know, famous things that really got big in Berkeley, like Pete's Coffee, Andronico's, a lot of the markets, I think my mom helped start, too, and the flea markets in Berkeley. They have just a really great community vibe for everyone to come and hang out, buy food, that sort of thing. So not much different than the one there is now, like every farmers market you see, but even a little upscaled, and maybe I can provide better vegetables and fruit here.
So you're looking at vendors other than just the farm or the, give me a motive, ranch or whatever. You're looking at bringing in other people. Because when I looked at it, the first thing I thought was, is you're just looking for someplace to sell your vegetables, which is fine, but I think we need more than that for a farmer's market.
Oh, I think everybody who's doing it now can do it at Vista Park if I get approved. So everyone that's here, it's, I'm worried we won't have enough vendors. I'm worried we won't have enough vendors, so. I mean, I just want to make it a bigger event, and then if we can get more tourists. Because I've read that Arizona Tucson's becoming a top destination, if not number one. So I would figure people would want to come from Tucson to Bisbee. And, uh, you know, have a really nice market, so all the vendors, if they could come back, but I don't know if that's. Okay with your board or your, you know, so that was one of, you know, my questions, but. I've talked to everyone and asked them if they could get the park and nobody seemed to have either the resources or the money or. Could put in an application against Laura, so they feel obligated to her, so if they want to come back and I could. Maybe work something out with Laura, but I don't know, depends on how many sponsors we can get.
Okay, Anna had her hand up first, Frank, then I'll come to you. Go ahead, Anna.
Just for the record, I want to say that La Ramada, the restaurant itself was not shut down by the Health Department. And I've been down at the farmers markets on Saturday and there are not people out walking around drinking.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just tell you, I, I have only seen a few. And La, I don't know if La Ramada is open, but I do know the inspectors were there twice already. I like La Ramada, don't get me wrong, but being on gravel for a farmer's market that's selling fresh vegetables. Is not ideal for children and babies who come to the park. I've seen mothers kind of like, oh, the dust. Or the wind, last weekend there was a windstorm and it just blows in your face and it's not really healthy. So I, I'm not sure, like, uh, you know, if you're taking it wrong. But also, the public really likes to go to the bathroom and have fresh water and electricity. We don't want to go into La Ramada. I don't want to feel obligated to buy their food, to go use the restroom.
Okay, uh. Looks like Anna's, okay, go ahead, Frank.
Um, I would like to make a motion to table this. So that she can have more time to to get this, her thoughts together about how this is going to take place. Sounds like there's a lot of, lot of loose ends here.
Okay, hang, just for a minute, um, Mr. Pollock and I saw you, something you'd like to.
Yeah, maybe you want to get a second first.
Well, if if he's making a motion, I don't know.
Yes, I'm making a motion to table.
I second.
Okay, thank you.
Motion by Frank and a second, um, to table for a, for a. For a little more information now, for discussion on that motion, go ahead, Steve.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I happen to agree with Frank. Um, I think. There's probably more questions than answers at this point. Um, what I would suggest is. That you go ahead and vote to table this motion. Um, and then if, um, Jesus and I. Uh, would get a chance to meet, uh, with Rana sometime in the next week. Uh, perhaps we could refine the application to a point where. Uh, then she could resubmit her application with more answers than questions. So, um, we would volunteer to take that on and that certainly, if you think anybody else. From staff needs to be involved in the process, uh, I'm, I'm open to suggestions, but we'll take that task on and with the, um. Uh, with the goal to try and get it back on June first agenda.
Okay, thank you for that. I might also ask that maybe the applicant reach out. To the current market and see if there's some synergy they can come together on. That may not work, um. Probably not something we as a city need to, need to negotiate, but if you can work on that, that would be, that would be. A good benefit for both, but, but anyway, we do, just a suggestion, uh, um, not a requirement, but. If that sounds good to everybody, then, uh, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion. Is there any more discussion? Do I say more hands? Oh, go ahead, Joan.
I was just thinking that it might be a good idea to contact the health inspector too, to see what, what he's looking at and what the problem is. Um, so that we know upfront, uh, how to deal with it.
Good idea.
Thank you for that.
I would, I would be open to, um, the three-month idea too. I mean, if. If I tried it for three months, then, um, how much would that cost?
It'd be a third of what is on this app, I'm sorry. My, my math skills failed me there for a minute. It'd be a fourth of what you see on this permit, which was fifty-two, sixty-five, so. Whatever a fourth of that would be.
Well, do you still have that offer where, you know, we could try the three months? And I can meet with Steve and Jesus and amend whatever paperwork, but at least. You know, some of these investors I've lined up, and I'll be honest. They have talked to Laura, who is reluctant to come back to the park. So I just don't want to, you know. I don't want to be in the middle of it, is all I'm saying, and I'm kind of in the middle of this, so I don't want to, um.
Okay, what I would, what I suggest, you just, uh, you. Come back to staff and the staff will work, that's what we have, our lovely staff to work for us and bring it to us, so. But I think you see the apprehension in, in our minds at this moment, and so we'll let staff work through this further and. You know, let them decide how they think that would be a good way to proceed and then we can bring it back to us, so. With that, we have a motion and a second, unless I see any other discussion. Uh, I'll call for a vote. Ashley, a motion to, uh, to table.
Councilmember Pollock. Councilmember Giacominio. Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Johns.
Hi.
Councilmember Hanson.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein. Mayor Budge.
Hi, motion passes seven zero, the motion is laid on the table and we'll see, uh, what the staff brings back to us. Thanks for joining us tonight and, um, and, uh, I'm sure we'll maybe talking again. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. That, uh, with that, we have the consent agenda out of. The way and we have no old business, so we're moving on to new business. This is item number three. Discussion of possible approval of Resolution R twenty-one oh four, designating. Carrie Bagley as the Chief Financial Officer, CFO for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. For the purpose of submitting the city, city's annual expenditure limitation report to the. Arizona Auditor General's Office. Ms. Bagley. Yeah, Steve present this.
Um, mayor and council. This is just the annual, um. CFO designation that's required by the Arizona Auditor General before we submit our expenditure limitation report. We just have to do it every year. Um, and we probably won't be submitting that till. Hmm, probably February, January, February of next year, after the audit's complete.
Alrighty, any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve res- resolution R dash twenty-one dash oh four, designating Carrie Bagley. As a CFO of the City of Bisbee for fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Joan, a second by Anna. Uh, I'll call for a, a vote on this, please. Thank you.
Councilmember Pollock. Councilmember Giacominio.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Councilmember Johns.
Hi.
Councilmember Hanson.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Hi.
Mayor Budge.
Hi, motion passes seven zero. Unanimous, so moved. All right, moving on to item number four. This is a discussion, uh, to approve the PSPRS pension funding policy. Um, again, Carrie, it's up, it's like you're going to explain it, again, it's like kind of boilerplate, right?
Yes, it's just, uh, the PSPRS requires this annually, um, uh. So a plan basically on how we're going to pay down our pension liability. And right now, our plan is just to follow the annual contribution requirement by the PSPRS, which would. Have it paid down by twenty forty-seven.
All right, a note for the people that are tuned in, this, that's twenty-seven more years. Um, with a debt of about twenty-two million dollars. Um, fortunately, our. Fire department ratio of funding fell from six point two to five point three this year. And the police department's rate of funding fell from twelve point three to ten point three, so just. To put it all out there, that's kind of where we're at. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's where we're at. All right, um, I'll just make a motion to. I move to approve the PSPRS pension funding, funding policy.
Second that.
Motion by myself and a second by Frank to move the, to approve the PSPRS funding. Have a vote, please.
Councilmember Pollock.
Hi.
Councilmember Giacominio.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Councilmember Johns.
Hi.
Councilmember Hanson.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein. Mayor Budge.
Hi, motion passes unanimous unanimously, seven zero, so moved. All right, I think we're now changing papers. Moving on to item number five, this is discussion of possible approval of the employee assistant plan. With Alliance Work Partners service contract for FY twenty-two. Be Personnel Director, go.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, so I'm bringing forth this evening an employee assistance plan. Which has many benefits and we currently have. An employee assistance plan through Mutual of Omaha. It is more of. Um, it doesn't go into as much detail and, um, personal. Um, information that, um, this program does, so. Um, this plan additionally is offered to all our City of Bisbee employees despite. Whether or not they are full-time or part-time, which this is really a nice benefit to be able to offer to all the employees. Um, there's, so it's referred to as life benefits, as in. The lives we live when we go home and things of that nature. Um, there is no out-of-pocket cost to the employee. Additionally, the. The plan meets the traumatic event counseling requirement for public safety employees. So this offers counseling, um, and it, everything that we're talking about here is confidential. And the employee and or whoever is needing the services can reach out on a twenty-four hour a day basis. Um, there is some legal and financial referral consultation. Um, referrals for different personal and professional needs. Also, um, online resources which can be used in the office for those of us sitting in front of a computer and. Other things, I think they have, like, you can log on and do some stretching and some exercises to try to help. You know, of the fatigue from sitting all day long and whatnot. Um, also training courses and things of that nature. So, there's also a benefit that employees don't have to contact human resources first if they have a private. Issue that might be, um, you know, they're facing either with themselves or with a family member. They can have this option available to them. Um, they would speak directly with an intake counselor. And confidentially, uh, discuss the counseling request, things of that nature. And again, these no-cost resources would be available to all our employees, part-time and full-time.
And the annual cost is twenty-two hundred dollars a year, twenty-two oh eight?
Yes, and that is to cover every employee and that, um. That would, yes, be effective July one.
Very good deal to me. I actually used this type of situation when I was a paramedic on a couple of really tough calls, so. It's, it's, I fully support it. Um, comments or questions from anyone? Okay, I see none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the fiscal twenty-two employee as. Plan with Alliance Work Partners contract.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Anna, a second by Leslie to approve the assistant plan with Alliance Work Partners. Contract, um, could have a vote, please.
Councilmember Pollock.
Hi.
Councilmember Giacominio.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Councilmember Johns.
Hi.
Councilmember Hanson.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein. Okay, sorry, thank you. Mayor Budge.
Hi, motion passes seven zero, so moved. All right, thank you, everybody. Uh, moving right along to item number six, this is discussion of possible acceptance of a grant. From the Bisbee Foundation in the amount of five thousand two hundred dollars. For the completion of phase one of the Evergreen Cemetery Committee project. Um, Mr. Harrow, I think this is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. So this grant application was submitted by. Our Evergreen Cemetery Committee, as I first thank you, thank them for putting in the effort. Um, the, the goal of this project is to add some watering. Um, opportunities to our trees that are existing, um, and also add six to nine trees there. Um, we plan on doing that with some water tanks, you know, obviously, we, we did remove. The water meter that was connected to Arizona Water, and so we plan on using some other opportunities for. Watering the trees there and making sure that we try to keep the cemetery as green and, and nice as possible. Um, this does include a in-kind portion of the grant, but does not include. Any monetary contribution from the city, so the, something that's, um, is. We, I have said that we, we can provide some, some labor and the committee believes that they can also. Uh, receive some voluntary labor. Um, so with that, I'd, I'd be happy to have, answer any questions.
Alrighty, I think I see our illustrious committee member raising her hand. Go ahead, Joni.
I don't have a question, I just want to make a statement. Um, I'd like to thank Lisa Holland for writing that grant. She was the one instrumental. In getting it, um, put together so that we could submit it. And also, um, young Mr. Oldfield for in-kind service of topping the trees in the Evergreen Cemetery for free. Um, he donated his time and he is, um, going in and removing all the, the dead trees, so I do want to. Recognize him and thank him for that also.
Okay, thanks for that. Um, anyone else? Well, Joni, don't mute yourself, you have to make the motion.
Um, so I move to accept the grant from the Bisbee Foundation in the amount of five thousand two hundred dollars for completion of phase one. Of the Evergreen Cemetery Committee project.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Joni and a second by Anna to accept the grant for the Bisbee Foundation for the Evergreen Cemetery. If I have a vote, thank you.
Councilmember Pollock. Councilmember Giacominio.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Councilmember Johns.
Hi.
Councilmember Hanson.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Hi.
Mayor Budge.
Hi, motion passes unanimously. So moved. All right. We're skipping right along here to item number seven. This will be a discussion. And possible approval to sign an opt-in letter for the ADOT, ADOT. Airport Service Treatment Program for twenty twenty-two. Again, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr., uh, members of the council. So this is a grant opportunity that we have that is provided by. Uh, the Arizona Department of Transportation Aeronautical Group. Um, this is something that comes around to us every three to four years. Specifically for pavement preservation on our airport. And it is our turn and we did discuss this during our tentative budget. I know that, uh, this is, that's still tentative and it has not been approved, but, uh, that, uh, our. But, uh, that, uh, our, our portion or our, our, uh, match of that. Um, is currently estimated at thirty-two thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars. Um, that portion of is tentatively put into our budget. Um, the total cost of the project for construction only would be three hundred thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars. Eighty-eight hundred, three thousand, three hundred thousand, two hundred, twenty-two, eight hundred and forty-five dollars. Um, that is construction. Our portion of, of this goes to construction. Uh, A dot provides one hundred percent of the engineering for this. And so, uh, this, this project is tentatively scheduled for a one inch overlay of our runway. Believe that's a great opportunity for us to, uh, preserve their, our runway. Um, something that I believe is needed and, uh, be happy to answer any questions.
All righty. Quick question for me, this doesn't include the taxiways or anything else, just the runway, is that right?
I believe it's runway only. Um, this is very tentative. Um, this is only an opt-in for us right now. So it's basically saying that we understand that, that they have their estimate and we are willing to move forward with this project.
Okay. Any more questions from anyone? Yes, go ahead, Lou.
Uh, this is not a question, it's, um, the point of information that I'd like to make and I'm going to direct it at Mr. Polken. Um, six months ago, I brought up this issue of. Fees for airport use facilities and, uh, it died on the vine, nothing happened. I'm going to bring that issue up again. And I'm going to ask Mr. Polken if he thinks that the, the present charges in our fee schedule are reasonable. And to begin with, um, access fees for single-engine aircraft, we're charging thirty-three cents a day. For a twin-engine aircraft, we're charging forty cents a day. Turbine jet aircraft, fifty cents a day. For airport hangar rentals, small hangar, five dollars a day, large hangar, ten dollars a day. City shade, a dollar sixty a day. Tie-down fees, fifty cents a day, sixty-six cents a day and one sixty a day respectively. Example of fees that are totally out of whack with the rest of the regional airports in southeastern Arizona. I would like Mr. Polken as city manager to look at those fees and determine whether or not we should be charging more money. Before I'm willing to spend another dollar of taxpayers' money regardless of the amount that's offered in grants on this airport. So that's my statement.
All right, I'll let Steve address that. That's not in front of us right now, but I think, uh, you know, it has to do with.
It will explain my vote on this issue.
Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and I, I agree with Mr. Pollock, uh, to the degree that. Are all of our fees, whether they're on the airport or any other function we perform, uh, need to be reviewed. Uh, annually or biannally or whatever we feel is, is best. And when we, you know, we, we've got. Um, fees for, uh, pretty much all of our different departments and all of them should be looked at on a. Every one-year, two-year, or five-year basis, depending on what you prefer. Now, having said that, um. And, and having only been back on the job now for just a little bit over a month, um, I haven't really, uh. Had a moment to breathe, uh, yet, much less review airport fees. I know that many of those fees have, are the same fees that have been effect. For a long time. Um, I also know that, uh, every time we talk about airport fees. Um, we also bring the Airport Advisory Commission into the discussion and ask them for a recommendation before we take it to the city council. So there's, there's that step. Uh, now that said, uh, you, some of you will also recall that. When I was here temporarily, uh, two years ago, um, I had mentioned that at that point in time. That airport runway was ten years old and that it was begging for, uh, some maintenance. That maintenance was never approved and never got performed. Um, A dot Arrow only comes around once in a while with an opportunity to use this money. Uh, to, uh, to resurface the runway, which by the way includes restriping the runway so that it has all the marks and, and designations on it. Uh, per their regulations. This is an opportunity, okay? Uh, whether we want to spend the money or not, um, these are rare occurrences because. A dot money generally comes from the federal government, uh, and the federal government right now isn't giving us money. Because we still have a through-the-fence issue that is unresolved and has been for several years now. So. We don't have many options to do this maintenance other than that which is before you this evening. And, and that which comes out of our general fund if we choose to spend that money. So, uh, my suggestion, um, and. Uh, and my recommendations, the entire staff's recommendation is that we go ahead and. Uh, get on the opt-in list so that sometime hopefully during our next fiscal year and possibly the federal government or the, excuse me, the state's fiscal year. Uh, that we're able to take advantage of this opportunity because it doesn't come around very often and, and, and that runway. Is crying for some maintenance. It needs to be done. If we don't, eventually we're going to lose it.
And the money we spent on it years ago was close to a million dollars or more, wasn't it? That was.
Was more, it was over a million dollars.
Just also, to be fair, I, I just brought up the fee schedule that was done before my term here. Became effective May seventh. I don't know if they, do you know, Lou, today, did you all consider the fees at that point when the, when the whole new fee schedule? Came out? Did you?
We talked about it in council.
I didn't know.
It died on the vine.
Oh, okay, nothing changed. All right. Well, I think it's good to review all these and compare ourselves, you know, just.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank Mr. Polken for his explanation.
Sure, thank you.
Welcome.
All righty, um, another put on the to-do list there, Mr. Manager. Um, all right, is there any more comments or questions on this item? Okay, seeing none, I can entertain a motion for item number seven.
I move.
Move to approve opting into the A D O T Airport Service Treatment Program twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
All right, just barely beat you, Anna. So we have a motion by Frank and a second by Anna. Uh, to opt in for the surface treatment program from A dot. Uh, could I have a vote, please, this corner?
Councilmember Pollock.
Hi.
Councilmember Giacomo No.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Councilmember Johns. Councilmember Hanson.
Hi.
Count, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Hi.
Mayor Budge.
Hi, motion passes, so moved. All right, so moving on to item number eight. Uh, this again will be a public works discussion of possible acceptance of a proposal to remove and replace the cool decking at the Bisbee City Pool. Public Works Director.
Members of the council, um, yes, we did, uh, as approved, we did publish a request for proposal. To remove and replace the cool decking at the city pool. We received one sealed bid. That cut, that proposal was for the amount of thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. Um, I did speak with the, uh, company that submitted their proposal. They anticipate ten business days to complete the project. Um, there is a two-year warranty that they include with their, uh, installation. Uh, one thing I do need to mention is, is originally when we spoke with these companies to get an estimate. Uh, that was the, the ten business days was something that was, um, expressed to us. However. Since then, there's been a, uh, scarcity of materials. And so I do need to say that they did express that it would take four weeks to get the materials to replace. Uh, the cool decking. So depending on, on what you all, what direction the city council would like to give us. Um, with, if this is approved, when we want to do this, um, we would be. In the middle of our swimming season or we could do it at the end of the swimming season, again, at the, uh, direction of city council. Um, I do, I do think I need to mention that in my council action form, I do show that. The line item is coming from a, a pool, uh, line item that, uh. Does shows that it will be negative, uh, that is some, that is because this project was not originally in this budget year planned for. During the COVID pandemic, the council gave, uh, Public Works Department direction to not open. And part of that discussion was to use a portion of the unused lifeguard salaries. To possibly fund this type of project. And so I do plan on doing that. We still do need to, uh, fund one month from this, uh, budget year to, for our lifeguards. So we won't be able to use the entire amount, uh, that was budgeted, but we will use some portion of that. Uh, in addition to fund this project, we anticipate to use unused portions of the capital improvement project fund. Um, so in your council action form, it does show that, uh, this line item would be a negative, but. Um, speaking with our finance department, we would be, with your approval, able to transfer funds from those line items to. Balance this project.
That would, that would be if we did this before the June coming, I guess. Because it wasn't in last year's budget or this current year's budget, I'm sorry. Um, I guess my one, I have two questions.
Sure.
If you might, um, maybe Carrie can tell me, what would be the amount coming out of capital improvements versus the other? Do we have a number that would be spent there versus?
I can tell you, um. I think what we.
Was broken down.
I understand that. Um, I think we anticipated needing. Um, six thousand dollars for the month of. May or the end of May, so the little bit of May and June to pay for the lifeguards this. This fiscal year. And then, uh, the rest of their salaries would, for the summer would come from next fiscal year. So. Uh, we currently have in that line item twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. So. Subtract off the six thousand, I believe. So that would, that would give us what we need.
So fifteen thousand and you'd have to make up the rest out of capital improvements.
Yes, sir.
Uh, one leather quick question was, I noticed that, you know, we approved of this bid to go out on. On, uh, basically by ten, but the bid that we're considering actually came in in February.
Um, oh.
Yeah, that, to me, did, did we go out and advertise outside? Did we?
No.
I'm kind of surprised we only got one bid that was three months prior.
I, I didn't notice the date that they had on their, their, uh, submission. What we did was we went to some companies. To get an estimate of where it would be. Um, they, they gave us that estimate at that point. Then I need, I. Realized that the cost was going to require council approval for a request for proposal and then, um, the actual construction. When we were a week or so into the request for proposal and I spoke with our city clerk's office. Noticed we did not have any applicant or any, uh, submittals at that point. So I reached out to the companies that we did. Um, contact and they must have submitted the exact same thing they gave us. Um, so the date on theirs is probably from when we originally contacted them.
Yeah, that was confusing to me. We got a bid three months before we went out and asked for one. So, uh, more questions, uh, because we obviously are going to have to think about, do we do this in the middle of the season or do we wait? Uh, Lou, I see your, see your hand.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor, that was my question. The delay is going to put this construction right into the monsoon season. I'm. Wondering what impact that's going to have on the project.
I, I did, I guess, I mentioned I did speak with, uh, classic pools. Um, it, again, it would take the, the ten days for them to do. We do have a pool cover, so we could, we could care, take care of that. Um, we could plan this and I've been looking and spoke with them. We could plan it so that we would get this completed. Um, with one weekend shutdown if we decided to do it during the, um, full season. Um, so we, we should be okay. I don't really feel that it is going to have any big impact on, on our pool itself.
However, I think what he's talking about is you can't really paint this stuff on if you've got weather coming in.
Sure.
That way you're, that's what I'm.
Yeah, that's, that's my concern.
Um, they didn't express, the, the, the classic pools did not express any concern about that. So that's the only thing I can, I can say to that.
That's because they are Tucson. Uh, more questions. Uh, Joni, you're, you're a pool person.
So I guess it's not so much a question as a statement. It would seem like it would be better to do at the end of the season. Because one, monsoons would be gone and then there'd be a longer cure time without people trotting all over it right after it's been done. Um, and then you wouldn't have the, um, ferocious nature of those that want to use the pool that haven't been able to use it for two years now. Um, being a little upset about it, which I can't blame them. You know, it's been a long, long time since pools been open. It just seems like it would be more, more better, yeah, but.
Okay, thank you.
Frank.
Yeah, I would agree with Joni. Why not do it at the end of the season unless there's some glaring reason that has to be done immediately? Seems like a no-brainer to do at the end of the season.
I don't have any direction from the health department that it needs to be done immediately. I have spoken to the health department. Um, our inspector for our area has, um, voiced his, uh. Really non-concern with our pool. So I, if that's, if that's what we would like to do, we can do that. It might take some, um, some things with the budget though, because then we're into the new budget season.
Budget's not done yet, but.
Correct.
Okay, uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I was up there last week and I took a close look at the condition of the existing deck. Um, in, in addition to what's described here, and I think they, they loosely describe it in their proposal. Um, there is starting to become a lot of areas of spalling concrete. Um, that concerns me because, uh, people walk on pool decks with bare feet, uh, many times and. I feel there is potential for damage to their feet. Um, I think we can mitigate that in this pool season possibly by. Covering those with, with mats if we can obtain some. Um, I know that, uh, Jesus had a conversation. Uh, with the folks that, uh, basically, uh, have been donating money. Over the past few years and also use the pool and of course thus their donations. And, uh, and I know that everybody seems to be aware that there's going to be, um, some construction there. I think the timing of the construction. Uh, really lies between the staff and, and, and the contractor. Uh, my only concern is that we hold the price. Um, uh, if, if we're going to do it later rather than sooner, we need to be able to hold the price for a specific period.
All right, more comments or questions? Feelings on now or later? Looking for direction from more than two. Anybody else?
I just wanted to say that I agree with Joni and Frank. I think that interrupting the swimming season would. Probably irritating to a lot of the pool patrons and if, um, like Steve says, we can get by with putting mats over the areas of exposed concrete. Then I think we should wait until the end of the swimming season.
Okay, saw your hand, Lou, real quick, yep.
I'm in agreement with all three of those statements.
Well, we're getting the consensus here. Joan.
So would we be able to get the same price if we put it off?
So would we be able to get the same price if we put it off until then?
Yes, there's a, there's a date and I can, I guess we can, I can look on their proposal. Their, their date does hold through, oh, what does it say here? Yeah, so I I can speak to them if we need to go beyond that. I've had success quite often when it comes to something like this, especially since. Um this would be something that is approved by the city council, so they know that this is a project that's going to move forward. It's just timing may be sensitive.
Now, we just want them to buy the stuff and get it in stock and then then they're committed. That would be the only problem would be the rise and I think uh. Material maybe. All right, um. Any other? Nope, don't see any. Um. Well, I'll make a motion that uh I move that we accept a proposal from Classic Pools. To remove and replace the cool decking at the Bisbee's. Uh city pool under the recommendations of council. To delay if possible for the same amount of money that uh that is listed here.
A second.
All right, we have a motion myself and a second by Joni. Uh roll call, please.
Council member Pollitt. Council member Giacomo.
Hi.
Council member Davis.
Hi.
Council member Johns.
Hi.
Council member Hanson.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Hi.
Mayor Budge.
Hi, motion seven zero. So moved. Um item number nine, this will be a discussion of possible approval of the purchase of a fuel management system to be installed. At the public works yard. So I get yours again.
It is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So yes, we did, our, our, the reason, one of the reasons that we. Um eventually moved over to a fuel card was because our fuel pump system uh has failed over at the public works yard. Um in order to get that um going again, we need to get that repaired. Um this portion of the uh repair is a fuel management system. So that would allow us to, to manage the fuel, who is receiving it in, run reports. Very similar to the way we are doing now with our fueling cards. Um this uh project again uh was a, it's something that was not budgeted in this fiscal year, so. We are requesting to take this from the contingency fund. Um this, the price of this, the fuel management system is five thousand two hundred or five thousand twenty four dollars and seventy cents. Um that is the initial install with software and hardware. Um will require a, an annual fee for the software of nine hundred and twenty four dollars. Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's, that's right, something I needed to correct. I did get a question on it. It's the, the annual fee is nine hundred and twenty four dollars, not nine thousand four hundred, not nine thousand two hundred and forty one. That is my typo. I apologize for that. Yeah, again, the annual fee is nine hundred and twenty four dollars, not nine thousand dollars. Um. With that, I will uh be happy to answer any questions.
Uh quickly, is there anything we have to do to the pump itself? I mean that.
Yes, there is. Yes, sir. So this is the fuel management system, so this will be um hardware and software. Um the pumps themselves are actually what failed. Currently, what we have installed over there are pumps with a flow meter and there was no management system. What we had for management system was a binder with paper. That is a, a very, in my opinion, eh uh not a inefficient way to. Manage the fuel that we are purchasing and using. So this is, I believe, a very important part of if we're going to return to managing and buying bulk fuel. Very important way to, to manage that so that we can keep track of who's purchasing or who is using what fuel. In what vehicle. Um yes, there is a, a pump fee or a pump. And flow meter system that will need to be purchased. Uh that purchase is approximately two thousand two hundred dollars. Um the company that we, we plan on using to provide that is under a cooperative and competitively bid contract. So we did not include that here because that does not require, it's not required in our purchasing policy. Uh the, because it is under the five thousand dollars and cooperatively bid.
Uh Mr. Park.
Yeah, um just to give uh the members of council a little background on this. Um when we went to the fuel card system sometime back. Um it caused an average increase in expenditures of four thousand dollars a month. So um over time, um that four thousand dollars twelve times is forty eight thousand dollars a year, so let's just round it up, call it fifty. So i- in the last year or two, we've been spending about fifty grand more a year for. Uh the fuel that we're buying at the pump, uh at pump prices and taxes. Um more than what we were spending in the past, so and 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 this of course is not accounting for fluctuations in fuel price, okay? So um by purchasing uh the new pumps and a fuel management system. Uh the cost of everything is going to be approximately eight thousand dollars. Uh what that means is that uh by ditching the fuel cards and going back to managing our own system the way we were. Um we're going to reduce our costs. We're not going to save any money, but we're going to reduce our costs. Uh by about uh forty eight thousand dollars a year, so the whole, the whole expenditure pays itself back in just a little over two months. And we have control over it and we get to subtract the state and federal taxes that we're exempt from.
All right. Questions, comments, Joe?
You're saying it costs forty eight thousand dollars. Was that for the management system?
Uh no, what I was referring to uh Chris Hanson was the additional cost for fuel that we paid. Every year since we went to the fuel card system.
Well, are. Because it wasn't bulk fuel?
Right, plus we're paying the state federal taxes that we're exempt from.
All right, uh Leslie.
I just wondered, Jesus, if you could describe the um fuel management system a little bit, because I'm picturing like what we have at the county. Where you pull up to the pump and you have to put in the car number and put in the mileage and it tracks everything electronically, like what's going in every car. And then all the employees will interface with it. Is that kind of what you're talking about?
It, it's very similar, um only more modern.
Okay, great.
Our, our terminal will actually be a tablet that can actually work off of a, an app. So we can, employees can, you can download the app. Um and they can, they can pre-log into their phone and drive up in fuel that way. And it'll know who logged in in which vehicle they're doing, so they, there are a number of ways. So it does have an app that you can use from your phone that will activate the pump. You can use the tablet terminal that will activate the pump. Um in, in fact, there, with this proposal, they've actually proposed some key fobs. Um which do or do not have to be purchased. We can, we can reduce the cost a little bit if we don't purchase the key fobs. Um but it's, it's, I believe, uh it's in the cost here, I apologize. I can look that up really quick. At the end, it is a cost of uh three hundred and fifty dollars for a hundred and seventy five key fobs. Um so we can reduce the cost a little bit if we, if we, we choose, but um this is a more modern um system. The system is used, I believe, by Sierra Vista, but again, we're getting the newest version of it, so we get. A tablet that's a key tur, that's the terminal to activate it, or we can use their um their. Mobile app to activate it and again, we get the, we get all of the um benefits of being able to. Monitor that in, in run different reports.
Thank you. That sounds cool.
You for sure want to be able to shut off one of those key fobs if you got lots.
Absolutely.
Anyway, so it, it integrates with uh with the web, of course, when it comes to.
All of, all of the data will be stored on, on the cloud, so we can access this data um from our desk at City Hall. Uh from our homes or whoever's got the, the correct um access to login. We can, we can run reports and, and find exactly where the fuel is going and who is using it.
Alrighty, more questions or comments? All right, I'll, oh Hannah, you make, go ahead.
Not so much a question, but a comment that I, that's a heck of a savings. So um I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Parkin.
All right, well, I'll let you make the motion, Anna, since.
Okay, I move. System from fluid secure.
I second.
All right, I saw Hannah make the motion or I think I heard it and I, what, I didn't catch the second.
I did.
Joni.
All right, thank you. Um. So we'll have a, a vote, please, while I zoom down.
Council member Giacomo.
Hi.
Council member Davis.
Hi.
Council member Johns.
Hi.
Council member Hanson.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Hi.
Mayor Budge.
Hi, motion passes seven zero. So I'm moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. So item ten, um this is just a discussion of possible direction. To staff on we as a council and staff meeting again in person. I put this on just because it's not something we can do overnight. We'll have to uh. If and when we decide to start getting back together as a council. Uh we need to get over and get the uh, the old meeting room up to snuff and, and get things working again and. Making sure things work, so I just wanted to know if, well, for some discussion tonight, if we want to start working in that direction. How everybody feels and so um I'll open it up for discussion. My seat, Frank, thanks for, and then I'll go to Leslie.
Well, I'm, I'm hoping that we can stay virtual till uh the first of August, because I have to travel back east to uh for some family business. And I'll be missing a few meetings and I'd like to be able to attend virtually as we are doing presently. And also, I don't really see the need to start meeting face to face if the public can't attend. I, I think this is a good forum for the public. They can hear us and see us. Uh you know, if we go to a room and it's videoed and sent out, it's, I think it's going to make it, seems to be harder. So unless we can open the whole thing up, which I hope we can do in, in August. Um or sometime soon after, I, I'd like to stay virtual.
All right, uh Leslie.
Well, Frank kind of made the point that I was going to make, um that I would rather. We not start meeting in person until we can open it up to the public, because I know that when it's just us meeting and. We're trying to broadcast that, people have more trouble hearing us than they do over Zoom. And so, yeah, I agree with that. I would like to go back in person when we can open the meeting to the public again.
All right, Hannah.
And we still um do, I, I think Ashley does it Facebook Live, doesn't she? So the public can still see us. I mean, I think we should be meeting in person. I think we should have done it a while back. It's harder to, to me, it's harder to do it via Zoom. And it's, it's easier to have a discussion when we're all there together.
Okay, uh Joe.
I have to agree with uh Leslie and uh and Frank. Uh simply because if, if the public isn't there and I don't know what the requirement is going to be for wearing masks or not. Um because we're inside more than, than uh five people or. Uh eight people or whatever the requirement is. You can't hear. Uh I just had a, the, the first meeting in person. Uh last night at a, for another organization and it was very difficult. Um to hear people, um and we, and it's actually was a hybrid. Uh we had some people calling in or that were doing Zoom and some people that were there in um in person. But I just found it very difficult with the mask on to be, be able to talk uh clearly enough that people could understand you.
Yeah, I remember before they went total Zoom, you guys used to meet, you know, then you distanced yourselves and then. And then we're still broadcasting, the public weren't allowed and so I just want to know if we just want to wait until we throw the thing wide open. Or if we want to kind of break into it slowly, so that was my, why I brought this up and I, I just needed to get everybody's opinion. Uh Joni, go ahead.
Considering um almost everybody else is now meeting in person, I think we're behind the ball. I am personally tired of being on Zoom. If that's hearing is the issue, then maybe we need to look at our audio um at the main meeting place. And you know, what we should be looking at too is slowly phasing in people being able to come in also. I mean, if it's an issue, we can still wear masks. That's not that big of a deal. And if you're not going to be there, I mean, we can still work around that like we've done before, either with call in or, you know, maybe. A Zoom can be set up that can be broadcast, so, but personally, I think we need to get back into meeting in person.
All right, Lou, you're the, yeah, thank you, go ahead.
I think ninety days is a good time period to do the phase in where everybody goes back to live meetings and colluding the public, so I. Be inclined to agree with Frank and Joan and Wesley on that.
All right, well, majority rules. So uh at this point, we'll, we'll stay Zoom and let's all hoping uh that things continue to open up and. Stay great and maybe we can, you know, move it up a little bit and Frank, if we have to bring you in on the last meeting or so with uh. On, on uh, on Zoom yourself, um you'll just have to suffer, but no, I mean, we, we'll get you. We'll get you in there somehow. I mean, don't worry, so.
However it works.
All right, um thank you, everybody, for um for giving us uh some thought on that. I, I, I wanted to bring that up just so that uh we could get everybody's opinion. Uh without objection, if everybody doesn't mind, I would like to move again the city manager's report up to now. It's really tough on Zoom for people to know when we're coming out of executive to re-log in and, and I think it's important that, that they hear from. For, for those reports now before we sign off and go into executive, so. Unless I see objection, I'm going to move to city manager report at this time, item thirteen. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um now, the, the, we'll, we'll have several items tonight. Um uh first of all, uh as we're be, we've been doing every council meeting for the last month or so. Uh Mr. Harrow is going to give us a, a two-minute update on uh, on the Main Street project.
Thank you, Mr. Parkin. Um so uh the W L B group did complete their survey. Of the scope for the Main Street area. They completed that last week. Um so the next task on their, their schedule is to complete an analysis of the current or the. Um existing condition as it is now of the asphalt with the um flow capacity. Um they anticipate having that done this next week. Um and then the next task on their list is to complete a pre-overlay analysis of the drainage runoff. That may take a little bit longer, so they're anticipating two weeks to do that. Um it's going to take some historic, uh maybe some picture, not historic, you know, it hasn't been that long, but some pictures, um some. Uh analysis and of what the existing asphalt uh surface was prior to the overlay and so they'll do a drainage analysis at that point. So I am anticipating being very close to being completing um this study uh in the next three weeks.
If, since it's on the agenda as a, as one of the items, I think I, I could ask a question or two, which would be. I know the historic, you know, that. I know the historic, you know, that that part is all fine, but if we get the initial one, which says, yes, we have a flow, we have a we have this. Then I would suggest we start thinking about. Not the past, but what we're gonna do in the future. So if in that next week, if we get the the initial report, if we could get part a partial of that and. And then maybe understand where we're at, that would be helpful uh as far as I would be concerned. So.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Well, uh, the the next uh next meeting, I I I anticipate being able to give you some update on that analysis.
All right. If something comes out before that, I'll let I'll get Ashley to send it out to everybody. So. All right, thank you for that, and we'll continue on, uh, Mr. Park.
Okay, thank you. And uh and and, you know, please be assured that we're. Uh, attempting to get this thing completed with all deliberate speed because we know time is of the essence. Um, also tonight, um, I'm asking Chief Castillo. Uh, to give you an update on the two fire incidents that occurred over the weekend. George?
Guys, hear me?
You're good.
Hello? Okay. Yeah, I'd just like to give you guys an update on the fire that started up in uh Zacatacas Canyon. First and foremost, I'd like to thank all the resources that came out and helped us when I uh. Called for help, um State Land Department, B L M, U S Forest Service. Um, Naco Fire District, and of course, you know, the Bisbee Police, Sheriff's Department and Public Works. That fire there, uh, we were very lucky that it started in the evening hours around five, a little after five. And the winds were very calm. Um. The these fires up there in Old Bisbee are very, very scary. And if that fire would have happened uh. A few days ago, uh, when we had the high winds already here in in the afternoon. Hours, it could have been a lot worse. Uh, the air drops were um. Very effective to keep the fire from coming into town. Uh, there was a couple of drops that they had to cancel. Because of um people in the area. Uh, I guess the looky-loos that were in that area. So um. We're gonna have to be a little bit more next time we have a fire, a little bit more cautious of uh people uh on the fire scenes because um. You know, even with that last airdrop that was missed, it could have. Uh, it could have been a little bit better uh for us to fight that fire a little bit more. Um, but all in all, it uh it worked out well. I'm very proud of my crew. Very proud of my department for a quick response and um I'm just glad it didn't get any further into town. Uh, but that's one of our main concerns and um especially with I'm gonna be doing a story. With the Observer on fireworks. Um, you know, fireworks are coming up and um. With these dry conditions, I would advise anybody to please to be very careful with them or not even light them at all if possible. And so they also, we had another fire on Sunday, another brush fire. This one happened and we did have high winds. Um, it did get a little out of control. But again, a quick response from our guys, uh, we were able to contain it. Uh, I think it was just a little bit. Approximately about a couple acres. Um, that happened over there behind um. The uh. Daycare Center there by the uh gas station off ninety-two by Jimmy's Hot Dogs. Um, again, that one could have got very, very um out of control. Um, again, quick response and a good good hard work from my guys. And it's about all I got.
Okay. Um, thank you, George. Um, also, I think everyone shares uh. Uh, your gratitude for not just our folks, but all the folks who come in every time and help us uh to keep those fires from getting down into. Uh, dangerous areas. So uh a and one word of caution for the looky-loos that uh the air tankers had to avoid. Um, when they drop that stuff, um, it has the consistency of wet concrete. Um, it's gonna hurt. Um, and and it isn't gonna come out of your clothes uh very easily either. In fact, it can probably ruin them. So. Please stay away from an active fire scene because we gotta let the folks that fight the fires do their job. So, um, okay, thank you, uh, Chief. I appreciate that report.
Thank you.
I've got just a few other quick items. Um, first of all, um, uh, behind me tonight, I just want to introduce you to the Orion Nebula. Um, that's uh a nebula that's something on the order of thirteen hundred light years away from us, uh, but still in the Milky Way. So. Um, just uh let me know if if you ever you can see it with your naked eye, if you know where to look. Um, and if you want to know where to look. Um, just let me know and I'll help you out. Um, back to business. Um. We have two announcements uh to make. Um, number one, City Hall will be unlocked starting tomorrow morning. Um, Public Works crews were able to assemble um a counter space. Uh, when you enter uh the building so that the public can interface uh with our folks in a safe manner. And uh so we felt that uh now that we have that facility, we have that control over. Uh, uh, flow with inside inside the building. Uh, we can now unlock the door and allow people to enter. So. That'll make it a lot more convenient for um our citizens and it will also make it a lot more convenient for. Um, our employees. So starting tomorrow morning, um, that's that's what's gonna happen. Uh, however, the next announcement uh on Thursday. And currently scheduled between about eight and about ten A M, uh, there will be a scheduled power outage. Um, in the area where you see the contractors crews working on transmission line system right now. Um. Uh, that area will include uh pretty much uh the Lowell area along Erie Street. It will also include the police station, but the police station has its own generator system. So they'll be able to retain uh maintain power uh top rate police station. Um, we will not be able to maintain power to keep City Hall open on Thursday. Um, we met with APS yesterday and and they are going to um interface with Chief Atchavi. Uh, what uh to try and fine tune that timeframe. Um, uh, my indication, my inclination at this point. Uh, is to close City Hall during that period of time uh that there is no power. Um, the uh uh computer server system will have, we have to anticipate the time so we can safely turn off the s- the servers. And then restart them when it's over. Uh, so as soon as we have a handle on. Um, the period of time where we're going to be closed, uh, we will announce that to the public and we will. Uh, certainly let you know uh individually uh what we think that's gonna be. So. Uh, and and as all construction projects go, uh, we're gonna give you our best estimate. Um, um, on that. And I know there's a question, I know that uh. Um, th- there is a question about the Gleana area. Um, I can't answer that question just yet. Hopefully, we'll have better information. Uh, tomorrow when uh Chief Atchavi gets more information from the APS uh regional manager. So once again, um, we're we're going to close City Hall during the period of the outage. So. And we'll do our best to let you know as soon as we can what hours that will be. Um, okay, also, uh, the pool, uh, we are confident at this point that the pool will reopen. Um, on May twenty-eighth in time for the uh Memorial Day weekend. And uh, we feel confident now that we have uh secured the appropriate number of personnel that we need to operate the pool. So um, that's good news. Um, we we also have taken an inventory of all the. Supplies and chemicals that we need to operate the pool for the season. Um, and uh it looks as if we're in good shape. Uh, for supplies. The only thing that uh, you know, we've got to work around or maybe. Delay till later is is the issue of the construction on the deck, but um, I'm I'm sure that we'll come to an excellent solution on that so that. Um, everybody gets a chance. We we wanted to open the pool for everyone. So. We feel now that we have the personnel e- e- able to open the pool so that anyone who wants to swim can do it. So. Uh, there will be more uh announcements on that as we get more information on our schedule. Um, so um, the only other thing that's on my list tonight is. Um, I I I know we we've talked uh on and off recently over the last month um about uh. Uh, uh, starting ahead with some solution for uh building or replacing our permanent city home. Um, and um, we have uh been contacted by uh Senator Kelly's office uh with the request that we. Um, um, asked for grant money for a major project in in the city. And uh, so uh, we have. Put an application together uh to uh of of about a million dollars. We haven't fine tuned that number yet. Um, about a million dollars to go along with the two million dollars that we already have. For the purpose of getting back in the uh in into a permanent home. So um, that will take some time, uh, but in the meantime. Uh, you know, uh, staff will be asking uh the mayor and council. Uh, for permission to commence with whatever procedure you want to follow. Uh, with regard to how how we will proceed, uh, we do have some documents that were prepared. Uh, back in twenty nineteen with a couple of options. Uh, I know there was some public input uh that was. Uh, uh, requested at that time and and given to the to the city. And so uh, I wanna uh, I'm just now getting to the point where I can review the information that. You received in twenty nineteen so that we can start to make us some rec- recommendations. To you on how you might want to proceed into the future. So um, as as we know, the the estimates came in a little higher than the money we had to do it with. Um, and so now now we're on a track where we're trying to find uh the funds available uh somewhere to to be able to complete the project. And and while we're doing that, I think we need to come to some conclusion on exactly what we're gonna do. So. Uh, and with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report for tonight.
All right. Thank you. Uh. Oh, Steve. Okay, um, with that, um, we'll jump back on to item number eleven, which is. Possibility of going into executive session uh to discuss discuss a couple of match matters. Um, I'll take a motion to go into executive session. Or I'll make the motion to go into executive session. Uh, seconded by Anna. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. Hearing none, motion passes. We'll sign off here now and go into uh executive session. Thank you, everybody.
All right. Eddie, when you guys are, Mary, I think you're muted.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my legs. Anyway, all right. I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
I move executive session.
Second.
All right. Have a motion come out of executive session by Anna, seconded by Joan. All those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Hearing none. Now out of executive session, back into regular session. So the final agenda item is number twelve. This is discussion of possible approval of the assignment of real property purchase agreement for three hundred Campbell Street. Bisbee, Arizona. Do I see any discussion? All right, seeing none. I'll just make a quick motion to uh approve the assignment. Of the real property purchase agreement for the three hundred Campbell Street Bisbee, Arizona.
Second.
A second.
All right. I made a motion, but it was the first second. And any other discussion or comments seen on us for a real call, please?
Councilmember Pollock.
Hi.
Councilmember Jacomino.
Nay.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Nay.
Mayor Budge.
I. Motion passes five two. So moved. Thank you, everybody, for another good council meeting, and we will. Get together again in two weeks. Hopefully, nothing comes up before then. Everybody stay safe. Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Oh, wait a minute.
I I make a motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna get that. One of these days. Okay, have a motion by Frank, seconded by Lou for adjournment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Nay, none? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Everybody have a good night.
Good night.
Night.
Gonna walk this off. Okay, thanks.